For the last time, the meeting will come to order, please. Roll call.
McEvers.
I'm here.
Gukin.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Goodlander.
Here.
Eddinger.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here. Thank you, Renata. Welcome to the Coeur d'Alene City Council. This evening, we are privileged to have Major Ben Markham with us. Would you please rise for the invocation and for the pledge?
Will you bow your heads with me? Heavenly Father, first of all, on behalf of all who are gathered here today, I want to thank you for your great love, your mercy, your care, and your blessings. Thank you for our community and for our country. Thank you for the great freedoms that we enjoy as its citizens. Thank you, Father, for life itself, for our families and our friends who are our encouragement and support, for the measure of health that we need in order to fulfill our callings, and for your loving provision for our needs. We thank you for the opportunity, Lord, to be involved in useful work in service to others, and we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we bear responsibility for the duties that we have each been entrusted with. We are especially grateful this evening, Father, as we recognize the service of three very faithful community servants. We are grateful for their dedication to and their great love for this community, and we pray for your blessing, mercy, and protection on Sandy and Mike and Deanna as they each move into a new chapter of life for themselves. We would also ask, Father, for your blessing, mercy, and protection on these new members of our city council, Steve and Amy and Kiki, as they take up their duties in service to our community. Our prayer for this council is that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, that you would give them a sense of the true needs of our people, that you would give them a keen desire for justice and rightness, and that you would give them confidence in what is good and decent. Father, give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their duties. I pray, Father, that you would give them an assurance of what would be pleasing to you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our great city. This is the prayer of our hearts. Father, hear our prayers. Amen.
We follow Mike in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Right, we do not have any presentations on the agenda tonight, so we will begin with public comment. If you are in the audience and you wish to address the council, this would be the time for you to come forward. You would have three minutes, and I would need your name and the city you reside in.
Oh, perfect. Looking for my... Madam Mayor, council folk, my name is Josh Hosten. I live at 1301 North 3rd Street here in Coeur d'Alene, 83814. On behalf of members of this community, members of this union, firefighters' union here in Coeur d'Alene, we'd like to recognize the service that our outgoing council folks and mayor have provided. Man, I'm standing way too close. Okay, so, I'd just like to say something real quick. Service, it's an honor to serve. Having served in military and as a firefighter, you have the opportunity to serve, and it's great, but your family serves with you, and the sacrifices that you make, you don't make alone. We certainly appreciate and recognize that the sacrifice you guys made. And with that, Councilwoman Deanna Goodlander, would you please... I don't know how this works.[296.12][296.12](Laughter).
Host, you'll have to read right into the mic.
Stand here, then.
Stand right here. Okay, perfect.
For the people out in TV land.
I'm batting a thousand right now.[310.64][310.64](Laughter).
Okay, you guys are gonna make me cry.
I would like to read this. This is for the Honorable Deanna Goodlander. The Coeur d'Alene Firefighters, IFF Local 710, thank you for your hard work and devotion to the cause of service to our community. You will always be our friend. I promise, I'll try to keep this to three minutes.[355.12][355.12](Laughter).
We don't care.[358.12][358.12](Laughter).
Councilman Mike Kennedy, would you please come on down? This is for the Honorable Michael Kennedy, excuse me. The Coeur d'Alene Firefighters, IFF Local 710, thank you for your hard work and devotion to the cause of service to our community. You will always be our friend.
Thank you, sir. Mutual.
Hope you got big muscles.[416.12][416.12](Laughter).
Madam Mayor, you're already on the way. Look at that. Come on over here, stand over here, and I'll set this up because it's kind of heavy.[432.02][432.02](Laughter). Oh, perfect. This is to the Honorable Sandy Bloom. The Coeur d'Alene Firefighters, IFF Local 710, thank you for your unprecedented 12-year tenure as mayor. You have guided our city with exceptional leadership, loyalty, and personal sacrifice in the cause of service to our community. You will always be our friend.
That's a really big ax.
Hold it up. Sorry. Hold it up like a belt. I can be the...
There's a new gavel.
There's a new gavel.
It almost looks like a Pulaski going, "Thank you."[497.12][497.12](Laughter).
I think we had public comment once where somebody brought one of these up there.[509.12][509.12](Laughter).
It was a little different.
And I would just like to close real quick. It's been an honor to work with you, and we look forward to the future of working with the new council folks and mayor coming in and the incumbents that are already there doing a good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Host. I can probably speak for all of us to say that we will dearly miss the fire family, but you might not have gotten rid of us. We'll be dropping by for dinner, so...
Absolutely.
Right. Anyone else wishing to make public comment at this time? Please come forward.
Hello, Madam Mayor, city council members. I'm not from the city of Coeur d'Alene presently, but I live in Pat, but I'm the father of Marylech, Steve Widmire. And I just wanted to make mention, I'm so incredibly proud of this young fellow that I had to get up and say something.[581.04][581.04](Laughter). I hope I'm not out of line.
No, you're not.
But I know that he will work hard and long for the city of Coeur d'Alene, and you can count on that. He'll follow through with his endeavors. He listens to people. He'll come to the correct decisions, I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Please come forward.
Madam Mayor, can I just say that Mr. Widmire, welcome, and you were not out of line, but we're confident your son will be often, so it's gonna be great.[626.12][626.12](Laughter). You can stream it on TV, on the Internet, so that'd be perfect.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Greg Cook from the Panhandle Area Council, 11100 Airport Drive, Hayden at the airport. I'd like to speak to you both as the director of the council and as a child of Coeur d'Alene. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your cooperation and coordination as an original member and longstanding member of the Panhandle Area Council, and the 40 years of public-private partnership that you and your predecessors have done here, and amazing accomplishments from downtown revitalization to urban renewal to parks to sewers to schools, all kinds of things, and thank you for that. I'd like to put a special shout-out to Deanna for serving on the board of directors and for your excellent advice and all of that, and a special thank you to Mike as well for your counsel in matters. As a kid growing up in Coeur d'Alene, I played on McEwen Field and Tubbs Hill and Playland Pier, and it's amazing to see what this city has become. And it's because of the amazing vision and the leadership and the sacrifice and service that people like you have done for this community. So, thank you for all the citizens and from the council, and good luck to the incoming mayor and council members, many of whom are classmates from us kids who also grew up in Coeur d'Alene. So, good luck, and thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? It's built in.
I'm Bill Green at 2803 North 5th in Coeur d'Alene, and I just want to also thank outgoing and incoming folks. And I haven't always agreed with everything that everybody has done. I think there's only accidentally one thing I didn't agree with, but I've always felt that everything that you've done, you've done from your heart for the best of the city as far as you could see and tell, and I certainly appreciate that. I'm sure a lot of other folks do too, even though they may not have agreed with everything. But I think what's really important is that you always had your heart in a right place, like our name says in Coeur d'Alene, and that you always had your mind pointed at what you really thought in your heart was the best thing for the town. And I think that is honorable and the best kind of attitude anybody can have in public service. So, I thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Godspeed for the future.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else wishing to make public comment at this time? Public comment is closed.
Madam Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent calendar, which includes Resolution 14-001, approval of business associate agreement with EF Recovery, approval of community development block grant agreement with Trinity Group Homes, approval of S-203, landings at Waterford 10th Edition, acceptance of the improvements, maintenance warranty agreement and security, and other items as submitted.
Second. A motion and a second on the floor to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? Dan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to note that on the resolution, the acronym HIPPA is spelled H-I-P-P-A, and I have alerted the clerk to this, and the copy that you will be signing will have the correct abbreviation.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Goodlander.
Yes.
Gukin.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements, council.
Madam Mayor, I have one. As one of the outgoing perks of the job as council president, I get to present you with this gift from the city family. And it's not as big as your ax.[872.14][872.14](Laughter). Thanks, firefighters, for upstaging me. But this says, "With sincere appreciation, the citizens, city council, and staff of the city of Coeur d'Alene present this plaque to Mayor Sandy Bloom for her 12 years of faithful dedication and conscientious service as mayor. On behalf of all of the city, your colleagues, and all of the people that have been touched by you," and that number is in the thousands. Thank you very much.
I'm crying.
Are there any other council comments? Ron?
Yeah. Sandy, you know, you and myself have worked on many different projects here in Coeur d'Alene together. We always haven't agreed on everything, but I want to say that I've served under eight different mayors. And Sandy, I consider you one of the best that I've ever served under, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Wait, Ron, "one of." Who are the other ones we're talking about here?[977.12][977.12](Laughter).
Let me start naming them all.
He was one.
That's what I meant.
Any other council comments?
Madam Mayor, I would just say, I thought about writing something down, and I thought about all the things that I could say, and at the end of the day, I thought about the following. I have never been a boat owner, but people say that the two most exciting days in a boat owner's life are the day you buy it and the day you sell it. And I have to say, I feel a good sense of joy and accomplishment today, and I haven't cried once, even thinking about it, but I am deeply grateful to the citizens of Coeur d'Alene who made this eight-year journey possible. It has been a blast, not what I expected and much more than I expected. The staff who work here, I have talked with many of you. I didn't get around to all the departments as I wanted to, another one of the regrets that I couldn't get my timing worked out, but I will tell you that there are going to be people in politics and government who will tell you that staff is overpaid, leans on their shovels, doesn't work hard enough. I'm here to tell you that is the absolute biggest insult, and I will, for the rest of my life, know what the citizens are getting from their value, from their dollar, with the staff that we have at this city. Three hundred and fifty some people give themselves every day, many of them putting themselves in harm's way, and on behalf of the rest of the citizens of Coeur d'Alene, I say thank you to the staff who have made this possible for so many of us. To my colleagues, I have learned from every one of you. I did not know what to expect, but at every turn, I learned something new, and it's been a great experience. My wife and my kids are not watching at home. They are out doing all the things that they do, which I am now going to be responsible for helping drive them to, but I can't say enough that Kathleen and Will, Nora, Maggie, Max, Quinn, Jack, and Ronan, you guys are the reason that we're here to try to do things to make this place better than it was when we got here. So, thank you all for allowing me to serve, and I am greatly in your debt, and we'll see you again soon. Thanks.
Well, since I'm the big boob up here, and I have a hard time keeping a tear out of my eye, I have never, in all my years, had an opportunity to meet and work with such remarkable people. Our city is so fortunate in the people that you have serving you. Mike said it much better than I, and he didn't say it while he was crying, so it makes it better yet and a little more understandable, but how do you say thank you? I think we say thank you when we look at the accomplishments. I think we say thank you when we see the kids running on the playgrounds. I think we say thank you when we see the parks and the streets clean and all the different things that this city makes happen for you, the citizens. I will tell you that no one does this work because they have to. They do this because they want to. They serve you because they want to. They are there to make your life better. They are there to make your city better, and this will happen on and on. I'm so pleased with our new council and our new mayor. I think we're leaving it in very good hands. I think that tonight, we can walk away, Mike, you and I and Sandy, and say, "Hey, good job." Any other council comments? So, my turn. So, Deanna, I'm gonna just try some more. This is from the city family for you. "With sincere appreciation, the citizens, mayor, city council, and staff of the city of Coeur d'Alene present this plaque to Deanna Goodlander for her 16 years of faithful dedication and conscientious service as city council."
I think I need a new one.[1256.02][1256.02](Laughter).
Mike, you said something different.[1267.72][1267.72](Laughter). Oh, no. I wish I could've thought of that. "With sincere appreciation, the citizens, mayor, city council, and staff of the city of Coeur d'Alene present this plaque to Mike Kennedy for his eight years of faithful dedication and conscientious service as city council."
Thank you.
And you used a skinny pic. Thank you, guys, for that.[1296.14][1296.14](Laughter).
Yeah, I'm looking good. Not so many wrinkles in this one.
Thank God for Photoshop.
Also, under mayor comments, I just want to take a minute to tell you what a privilege and an honor it has been to serve these past 12 years. Truly, an honor and a privilege. The city family is not anything I would have ever expected, and while I walk away today, I refuse to walk away from the city family. They truly are my family. However, I have to thank, and I have a lot of my family here tonight, this job can't be done without your family's support. They share their time, they give me all their love, and they are the support that you need on those days when you wonder how you can take the next step, and I thank you very much for that. A team, I think, is put in place, and the personality of a team is usually built around the blocks that the people ahead of us put there. It has a personality and it has a culture, and I believe that the team that follows us will be just as good and even better, because the foundation was built by those that came before us, and I believe this council and the ones I've served with have built strong building blocks for you to follow. So, I wish you all of the luck in the world. A new chapter is just what it's called, and we're all headed for a new chapter, and none of us are probably really sure what that's going to be, but I can tell you from my point of view, I've been in this community all my life, and it has given me more than I could have ever expected, and I continue to give back, and I will, because the community has made me the richest person I know, and that's not with money. So, I thank you for the honor of giving me the privilege to serve as your mayor for the past 12 years. Thank you. You said you didn't have a report. Did you change your mind?
I don't have a report.
Okay.
Gift. With the department heads and city staff, please stand up. Come join me. Come on. On behalf of the executive team and your city family, I'd like to say again, thank you for the opportunity to serve you. It has been an honor. This little gift we have for you, Mayor Bloom, and it is a scrapbook. It is dated 2001 to 2013, and it was created by several hundred pages, I think, was created by, with the help of your city family, your biological family, and your community family. And we think that you will enjoy it. It reflects, hopefully, most of what has been accomplished in the last 12 years. And again, on behalf... Wow![1485.72][1485.72](Laughter). ...of your city family, we would like to present this to you.
This I will cherish. Can't even imagine what's in there.[1534.42][1534.42](Laughter).
Oh, you'll enjoy it.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, Renata, it's your turn. The show is yours.
I could get Mr. Widmire to come on up and join me. I can have you step on that side of the table. This is probably the last time I get to tell you what to do, huh?[1555.54][1555.54](Laughter).
Go for it.
All right, this is going to be the administration of your oath of office. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Steve Widmire.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
The ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
That I will faithfully discharge all the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge all the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Are you feeling the pressure yet, Steve?
This is your copy and complimentary from the mayor's office. If I could get Kiki and Amy and Woody to come on down here. We'll do yours next. And Woody, we'll start with you. If you guys want to wait over there, we'll do one at a time.
This is genuinely thorn between the roses.
Woody, you've been here before, but you get to do it again. You get to do it again. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I state my name. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I, Woody McEvers.
I, Woody McEvers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And the ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
And the ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
That I will faithfully discharge all of the duties.
I will faithfully discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
For the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And Kiki, I have you next on the list. All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kiki Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
The ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
That I will faithfully discharge all of the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge all of the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And a pen.
Call the meeting to order. Very excited to begin, as Sandy said, a new chapter for the city of Coeur d'Alene. I'm very excited, too, to use this gavel of which my father made for me. He sent it to me on my birthday in September, so I wasn't quite sure I was going to be able to use it, so I'm very glad to be able to use it. And again, you know, you always... I always listen to your father, and my father has set down a challenge to make sure that I work hard for all of the city residents of Coeur d'Alene. But his phone number will be on the website in case you have any problems.[1558.82][1558.82](LAUGHTER). So we will get right into business here, and our first piece of business is to elect the council president. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dan. Roll call.
Gookin?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Edinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Okay, so now we can get to business with the election of the council president, so we're looking for a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Woody McEvers for council president.
Second. So we have a motion and a second amendment. Is any discussion?
Do you have to call the guy Mr. President?
I'm not going to call you Mr. President. I'm just going to call you Woody.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Mayor? I move that nomination cease, and we pass a unanimous vote for Woody for president of the city council.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carried. So next, we will get into announcements of committees. So I'm just going to go down the council members' names and put their name... Committee name to their council member. So for Councilmember Edinger, Councilmember Edinger is going to be involved with General Services, Tubbs Hill, Parks Foundation, Park and Rec, and the Senior Center. Councilmember Miller is going to be a member of the Public Works Committee, Library Board, Panhandle Area Council. Councilmember Gookin will be a member of the Public Works, and will also be a member of the Cutney Metropolitan Planning Organization. Councilmember... Council President McEvers will be involved with Public Works, as well as CDA-TV. Councilmember Adams will be on General Services and the Ped Bike Committee. And Councilmember Evans will be a member of the General Services and the Arts Commission, as well as the Parking Commission. So those are appointments that are made to those commissions. So I want to keep our meeting short tonight. I want to see if there's any other announcements. I want to be respectful of Councilmember Adams's time. There's an important basketball game that he would like to get to tonight that's involving his son. I know how important that is to him. So I just want to see if there's any council members that may have any comments. Oh, this is going to go smooth, then. Yeah.[1718.13][1718.13](LAUGHTER). Well, this is... This is an easy job.[1721.13][1721.13](LAUGHTER). So that is... We had a very short agenda tonight. All of the work will begin tomorrow, and I'm looking forward to working with all the members of the council. We have an excellent council, and I'm looking... Really looking forward to working for the citizens of Coeur d'Alene, and I'm excited about it. So we'll look for a motion to recess to January fourteenth workshop.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess to January fourteenth at noon in the old council chambers for a workshop regarding planning land use codes.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we will recess this meeting to January fourteenth. Thank everyone for coming.[1766.92][1766.92](CROWD APPLAUSE).